Recording in progress.
All right, I will call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, would you take role, please?
Sure, Commissioner Dibdall?
Here.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Commissioner Bursh?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsey?
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You have before you the consent calendar. Is there anything that someone wants to discuss? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, discuss scheduling of future municipal elections. Jameson, would you like to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, we had discussion on the passage of HB 1130 at this last legislative session. This is a bill that requires cities and school districts to begin holding their local elections either in June during the state's primary election or in November during the state's general election. Historically, we've held ours in conjunction with the school district in April, so either one would be a change from what we're used to. We aren't looking for action tonight. Each year, we take action to set the official election date, but we are looking for direction so that we know when to start planning for that and putting it on the agenda. The last meeting, we discussed some of the advantages and disadvantages of June versus November, and each have both. We also heard from the commission that you were looking for more feedback on what the school district was looking to do, and I have confirmed to the school that their preference would be.
We're good.
Very good.
So the school district's preference is to move towards June. Of course, the city can still decide to pursue either option, but I know that is a consideration as there is some efficiencies, both in work and in cost to conjoin with the school district. So again, staff, I'm just looking for this direction on when you would like to see us start having those elections planned for future years.
Kelly, since you're online, would you want to discuss first? Kelly, are you there?
He must be off now, yeah.
No? Then either one of you gentlemen?
Jameson, staff-wise, what inputs do we have, or your team? If any, I mean, is it?
Amy, have you done an election yet? Do you want to take that?
I have not done an election yet, but it would be our preference to be on the same timeline as the school district.
As far as inputs, you're looking at what type of work goes into it?
Yeah.
It's a lot of scheduling and planning on the finance department's side. There's costs for ballots and for election workers. I think some of those are some of the bigger inputs, so when you share with the school district or others, those costs are going to be shared as well. We have, I think, the kind of the same usual group of volunteers that do get paid for the election, to work that election. And so we typically reach out to the same folks each time, and they're very generous with helping out each year.
Yeah, I don't have, I mean, a real strong opinion.
I really don't have any other questions. I'd just say I would want to align with what the school board was suggesting as well.
I wouldn't be in agreement, I think, aligning with the school board and that because typically in that, in the November elections and that, there's a lot of things on the ballot. And then we also have to separate out, you know, the city from, you know, what the county has on the ballot. Where when you're done with the school board and that, you know, it just seems like it goes a little bit easier and a little bit smoother. So my preference would be to align with the school board.
Well, in each year, when we've had in April, we typically set that election date probably in January or so. We set the official date, as each year you can decide to do something differently. I think there's a lot of advantages to being consistent, of course, but next year, probably that February or March timeframe, we would have action to set it in June, and that's the direction that I'm receiving to stick with the school. And if for some reason after that you want to change it in future years, that there's nothing that stops the city from making that decision. For now, we'll plan for June.
Okay. And then moving on, new business, discussion and action to approve appointment of the city commission vacancy. And we have the three candidates and that in the room. So... Do we have a motion?
First, yeah, I'd just like to thank the three of you for showing up here tonight and for putting your hat into the ring and, first off, just showing your commitment to the community. It's great to have all of you candidates who are willing to put forth and put in the time and effort to be up here along with myself and Dre and Kelly. So with that said, I guess there was one person I felt stuck out a little bit more than the rest, and that was Jenny. So unless there's other public comment in that regard, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jenny Wolfe to the city commission vacancy.
Okay. Dre?
I'll second that. Dan touched on kind of the process, what we thought, and that's where I'm at as well.
Is Kelly online now, still? No?
No, he is not.
Okay. Well, you know, I too really want to thank everyone. I mean, this has been a rare year. Never in that, in the, this is my 10th year, in that have we had to appoint someone midway in that, but two midway. And I would concur with the other commissioners and that and select Jenny to be the one to replace our, or fill our vacancy, vacant seat. And so with that, Jenny, would you want to come forward?
You do need to take a vote on it.
We need to.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
I could see a roll call as well, but.
Okay, would you do a roll call?
A roll call? Commissioner Bursh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wire?
Aye.
Okay, but do I do, do?
Yeah, if Kelly jumps back on, we can get him.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor Lindsey?
Aye. So with that, all in favor and that, anyone opposed? All right? With that, Jenny, would you want to come forth and take the oath of office? If you would, if you would come back here and that, it would work best, I believe.
That would better for Savannah, so we have to have her back.
You'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota...
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of commissioner...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of commissioner...
For the city of Madison, Lake County, to the best of my ability.
For the city of Madison, Lake County, to the best of my ability.
Very good. And I'll ask for your signature right here. Okay? And then if you would like to take a spot in either one of the chairs?
You said next to Kelly.
Did I say Kelly?
You did say Kelly.
So, and I too really want to thank the, all the people in that that stepped forward and that to show their commitment to the citizens of Madison. So, again, thank you. Number 12, approve ordinance number 1681, amend appropriation ordinance number 1672. Amy or Jameson, who would like to address that?
Go ahead, Amy.
Yep. This is the first reading of ordinance 1681, which is a supplemental appropriation ordinance for unbudgeted work completed by BNSF at the Grant Avenue rail crossing. This project was initially brought to this city in 2022. It was too late in the construction season to continue at that time. It was budgeted for in 2023 and 2024. It fell off the radar with lack of communication from BNSF, so it was not budgeted for in 2025. The work was completed by BNSF without notification to the city. It is completed, and therefore, we need this appropriation to pay the bill that we have received for the services.
I'll add a little more, just since we do have a new commissioner, congratulations, Commissioner Wolfe. You're doing a little bit of baptism by fire tonight, so probably for your benefit as well as the public, I can try to give some more of a deeper overview on some of these items than we normally would. So each year, as most people probably know, we pass a budget ordinance that determines what, or that sets what our budget plans are going to be for the following year, and those are oftentimes made, you know, a year in advance from when activities will actually occur. And we know that there are going to be changes that need to happen to every budget each year, just based on how things change and how fast the world moves. And so to do that, we can either do a contingency transfer or supplemental appropriations ordinance. In this case, we're doing the latter, where we are passing an ordinance to amend the prior ordinance, and this is for a railroad crossing that was not budgeted because it'd been planned for a couple of years, wasn't happening, and then it did end up occurring, and it is a necessary improvement or a good improvement to our railroad crossing over on Grant Avenue. If I remember correctly, is it Grant, Ryan?
Yes.
On Grant Avenue. So that is the reason for this. This will be the first reading for it, to amend our budget, to make sure that we have sufficient appropriations for that railroad crossing improvement for our share of it. And then next meeting, we would have the second and final reading for approval.
Questions or comments? If none, do we have a motion?
The work is complete?
Yes.
Yes, it was completed in May.
I don't have any.
I don't have any other questions.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1681, amend appropriation ordinance number 1672.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 13, approve resolution number 2025-14, unassign general and enterprise fund balances to align with the audit and statutory guidance. Amy, do you want to address this one?
Sure. This resolution, 2025-14, unassigns general and enterprise fund balances that lack formal justification or governing board action. Historically, the city has recorded various assigned fund balances with consistent, without consistent documentation. Following a review from the Department of Legislative Audit, it was determined that these assignments are not in compliance with GASB standards or South Dakota codified law 921-31.2, particularly in the absence of a specific appropriation or purpose. This resolution unassigns all balances except for the cash applied to the following year's budget, which is the only assignment recognized in our most recent audit. It also directs the Finance Office to inactive, unused accounts and establish that any future assignments will require formal commission action and proper documentation. I recommend approval of this resolution to bring our finance records into full compliance and to reset our fund balance policy moving forward.
Hey, I have a question in that. Years ago in that, we approved monies paid toward the completion of the street in the Williams addition and that because he couldn't complete it and that because there was a drainage ditch up there that was part of the farm, and money was set aside. Does it affect those at all, or does?
So the...
How does that work?
In a sense, we will be unassigning all the funds, and then in a month, we'll come back and look at what funds need to be put back in the correct proportions and accounts. In general audit guidance or DEA guidance, anything set into a reserve should be for five years, and it should be spent within that time. Anything after that goes back to the general fund.
Okay. So Ryan, and that you are well aware of what I'm talking about, the chances of that road being completed in five years is probably nil.
Probably.
But it was something that was agreed upon so that he could finish the la, build on the last two lots. So the city has been a beneficiary, you know, and it was a way of working with the contractor so that the last, I'm going to say 30 feet or whatever it is, and that wasn't completed. But we do want to note that if this does go into the general fund that we have in record and that, that the city was paid to finish that street to the property line.
Sure. And it's my understanding if they're not allocated in that five-year time span, it doesn't mean they can't come back out and then be reallocated to a reserve account.
Sounds good.
And for something like that, the city might commit itself to fulfill a certain end of a deal or to commit itself to future, to future deal if it's a contract. But it doesn't mean that we need to have our accounting tie up a certain amount of dollars so that it can't be spent elsewhere. It just says that we're going to fulfill our end of the deal when the time comes. And we have a large number, of course, every city needs to maintain certain amount of reserves, and so we do have a sufficient amount of cash to pay for items like that. This just takes away some of the restrictions on dollars that might have been put on it before and don't line up with GASB standards anymore.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note, you know, so that sometime down in the future, it doesn't come back to the developer and that because the developer did meet the, you know, the requirements of providing the funding to finish that last little bit, so.
Absolutely.
No, very good. Anyone else have any other questions?
GAZBA, is that what you're, the standards or what are you referencing?
They call it GASB.
GASB.
Government, what is it?
Governmental Accounting Standard Board.
There we go.
Other questions? If no other questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-14, unassigned general and enterprise fund balances to align with audit and statutory guidance.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 14, approve resolution number 2025-15, amending the city's rate structure, providing a surcharge for improvements to the sewer system, Eagan Avenue, for payment of a revenue borrower bond and yearly review of the rate. Jameson or Ryan?
I think I'll probably have Amy cover a couple of these next ones, but I'll give just a quick overview that the next three items on our agenda, items 14, 15, and 16 are all related to our Eagan Avenue project. Some are on the water side of the improvements where the financing comes from, and some are on the sewer side. So water is commonly, or sometimes can be referred to as drinking water, and then the sewer is sometimes referred to as clean water. So keep those two terms in mind. And these are each items that are needed to line up with the financing requirements to move forward with the loans from SRF. Amy, do you want to explain this resolution?
Yep. Resolution number 2025-18 establishes a monthly water surcharge, surcharge of $4 per user to fund repayment.
Have you been 15?
I'm 15.
2025 to fish? Oh, you said 18, okay. Sorry, go with 18. Resolution 2025 to 15?
Oh, I'm sorry, I...
I've done that one before. People don't usually correct me until I'm embarrassing myself.
Well, thank you for correcting me, I appreciate that. So let's try that again. 2025-15 establishes a monthly sewer charge of $4.30 per user to fund repayment of the clean water 06 borrower bond. The surcharge is required under our loan agreement with the South Dakota District to ensure repayment of the bond issued for sewer system improvements on Eagan Avenue. The surcharge revenue will be segregated from other utility funds and used solely for debt service on the bond. This resolution also provides for annual review and adjustment of the surcharge to ensure it meets repayment obligations. It will remain in effect until the bond is paid in full, at which time it will be automatically repealed.
I'll note here that, and again, just a little bit of extra background, so surcharges, we do a lot of projects with surcharges, and one of the reasons is because we can do that, and then the projects aren't constituted constitutional debt. And so that allows us to get some projects done without worrying about our debt limit. And then this is a way of splitting off some of our base rate into a surcharge, and it keeps it in a separate account so that we can see what's coming in, what's being generated from that, and then where it's going to. Sometimes this does not increase the rates because we're splitting it off from the base rates. Other times, it can be an additional rate to what's being charged, and when that happens, we have a rate resolution that goes with to adjust the final rates. Amy, would I cover all that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. Someone's going to ask, how long would this be? Do we have an estimate? How many years in that it would take to pay it off?
I would have to verify that. I don't want to speak incorrectly on that.
I want to say it's a 20-year loan.
I think it is, could be.
Toby's nodding at me, so we're fortunate in the audience.
Twenty.
Yeah, they're almost always 20-year loans as far as SRF projects go. I think that's kind of the year, the term length that they like to see, and it works out well for us because we know the infrastructure is going to be used at least for 20 years, so that way the users that are enjoying the improvements to systems are also the ones that are paying for it.
That clarifies it for someone who's going to ask after the meeting, so. Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
How are these applied to businesses? Is it everybody that's located on Eagan Avenue, or is it everybody that's going to be feeding into these?
This goes across all utilities, all users.
Everybody, okay.
Other questions?
So under yearly review, you'll look at this again next August and determine whether there needs to be any changes made?
Yeah, it actually won't go under review until it, we put the surcharges into place, and then we'll make sure we're meeting correct coverage for the requirements of the bond. So usually, it's implemented before, it could be implemented two months before the completion of the project.
And the project currently is scheduled for being completed in 2026 sometime?
Correct.
Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-15, amending the city's rate structure, providing for a surcharge for improvements to the sewer system, Eagan Avenue, for payment of a revenue borrower bond and yearly review rate.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 15, approve resolution 2025-18, amending the city's rate structure, providing for a surcharge for improvements to the water system, Eagan Avenue. And again, Amy, would you like to address this one?
Sure. This is basically the same thing that we just went through for the water piece of it on Eagan Avenue. 2025-18 establishes a monthly water surcharge of $4 per user to fund repayment of the DW04 borrower bond. Similar to the previous item, the surcharge supports repayment of the bond issuer for water system improvements on Eagan Avenue. The surcharge revenue will be segregated and used exclusively for debt service on the DW04 borrower bond. The surcharge will also be reviewed annually and adjusted as needed to meet financial obligations under the loan. It will remain in effect until the bond is paid in full, at which point it will be automatically repealed.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-18, amending the city's rate structure, providing for a surcharge for improvements to the water system, Eagan Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 16, approve resolution number 2025-17, amending resolution number 2024-21, approval of Eagan Avenue drinking water improvements, bonding, and SRF financing. Okay? And Jameson or Amy?
This one, we are just amending a resolution that was passed last year in 2024. It was passed as a bond that we are now changing. It should have never been as a revenue bond, it's a surcharge bond, so we're just changing the verbiage of that.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
I guess maybe not this one, but Toby, were you involved with reviewing and looking at a lot of this? Helping Amy with the bonding or?
I think this probably went through Meyer Henry.
Yep.
BNS, the state, the SRF, it goes through their own credit and Meyer Henry.
Oh, okay.
It goes back to, I think, a couple of years ago, when we bid all the massive, the rich draw, and we issued the rules called the bond anticipation.
Okay, no, I...
Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-17, amending resolution number 2024-21, approval of Eagan Avenue drinking water improvements, bonding, and SRF financing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 17, approve resolution number 2025-16, giving approval to the issuance and sale of electric project revenue bonds. And Jameson, Amy, or?
I think we'll have Toby come up for here.
Toby, would you mind coming up to the, there, and then push the button until the little red light comes on?
The quick background here is that as we've talked about in previous meetings, we have a number of large electric improvement projects. Hope he knows how to make an entrance. Well, we'll see if we can adjust the volume on this side. There must be something tuned up too high there. tuned up too high there. Um, so we have a lot of electric improvement projects planned for the next couple of years, and the, um, they need to have financing methods, and so we've had some action in the past to prepare for getting ready for the issuance of some electric revenue bonds, and this is the next step in that. The projects these are recovering would be the reconstruction of the Green Substation, the expansion of the Southeast Substation, and then our last electric conversion project going from overhead to underground. Toby, do you want to give any more info?
You can, you can try your mic.
There we go.
Thanks, Jamison.
Yep, you're good.
All right, good. Um, so recapping a little bit of what we're looking at here, so, per your question earlier, Jeray, like, when you go to borrow water sewer, the state of South Dakota has a fund for that. When you go to borrow electrical, there's not a state fund. So what we do is we go out and we look for a placement of that debt. We can do it one of two ways. We're an underwriter, where we can issue a bond and access the national markets. Um, given the case of what you have, electrical's always a long process. I, you know, from what it takes to the time you order to the time you finish, and there's pros and cons if we were to issue a bond today. Um, the pro is, we would lock in rates, and the rates would be fixed for twenty years. Uh, you know, they're not flexible because you're dealing with, uh, bondholders and not necessarily a bank. And so I worked a lot with your engineer and DGR to come up with a financing plan to recommend to you tonight. You'll see, there's a lot of pressure from our president on the Federal Reserve to lower rates. I, we truly believe that's going to come. So one thing I wanted to be real cognizant of is if we issued debt today, and I would deliver fifteen million to you tomorrow, you would be at that rate for a minimum of seven years. There's strong indication that rate's gonna go down. The other problem with that is, you start paying interest on it right away. Well, it's one thing if we were two years ago and we were issuing debt in that two to three percent, but we're in that mid-fours. So what we did is develop a plan that allows you to do what we call a bond anticipation note, very similar to what we did back in December on your sales tax, where you'll be able to draw down on this note, and so you're not going to incur interest expense right off the bat like you normally would on a bond. You're gonna treat it like a construction note. Um, it's estimated to be fifteen million. Bids are starting to come in pretty aggressive. Uh, I think the COVID is behind us. I would hate to issue fifteen million and you only need thirteen million. Uh, bondholders don't have a sense of humor, and they wait until the, you know, that seven years is up. So we're gonna be able to draft a plan that then not only allows you to only pay interest as you draw it down, I did some figuring based on, uh, Blair Metzger from DGR's drawdown plan. I would say this will save you several hundred thousands of dollars over the next couple of years, uh, just being able to draw it down. It's gonna allow you to gradually implement that surcharge, so you don't have to stack it on right away onto the backs of the customer. So again, it's gonna be able to come into place over time. Blair, I know, is, uh, actively working on your rate study through the different classifications. And then what we'll also do is monitor as that revenue comes in, in three years, let's say with our projections, you're looking at maybe a, a five or six million dollar cash surplus. Instead of borrowing fifteen million, you might only borrow nine million. So there, again, we're keeping you, I think, in a very good driver's seat. The downside of doing a bond anticipation note is you have double cost of issuance, but it's very minor when you start looking at a five hundred to eight hundred to maybe a million dollars in savings. You think paying four and a half percent on fifteen million today, but not using all the funds until year three from now, that adds up quite a bit. Um, so we're working with a, a local bank to develop the terms to come back for your approval, but I think we can really get something structured to be extremely efficient, and then with all hope, in th- three years, maybe it's even two years, if we see rates drop like the president is pushing, we can act at any time to go and access that market and then, uh, lock it in for that period of fifteen, twenty years, but it really keeps you in the driver's seat. It keeps the rates affordable for the time as you're building up, and it's gonna save you several hundred thousands of dollars of, uh, interest savings. So I think we've got a very sound plan. Lot of time, lot of effort's gone into, a lot of credit committee discussions, but, um, uh, really compliment Jamison and Amy, I know they probably made their eyes spin when I, we showed them the spreadsheet of all the different variables, but it's, uh, uh, it's, it's been very thorough for the protection of the city.
Very good. I know we've had a history of working with you in the past and that, and, uh, it has really been beneficial for the city of Madison and the taxpayers, so thank you on that side of it, so.
Thanks, Mayor.
But, and on this one here, approved resolution twenty sixteen, uh, any one have any questions or comments?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fif- sixteen, giving approval to the issuance of, and sale of an electric project revenue bond.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Toby.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Toby.
Number eighteen, authorized signature on grant application MBS GLG three dash forty-six, double oh twenty-nine, zero twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, Madison Municipal Airport. Uh, Ryan, do you want to address this one?
I sure can, thank you. Um, so this actually shouldn't indicate that it's a grant application, it's actually a grant agreement. Um, and the signature would be to accept the Federal Aviation Administration's offer and agreement to pay ninety-five percent of the Phase Two Airport Apron and Taxi Lane project. Um, and that amount that the federal, that the FAA agrees to pay is at four hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty dollars, that's the maximum obligation. Um, the city is responsible for two and a half percent, and the state is responsible for the remaining two and a half percent.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve our authorized signature on the grant agreement, as Roy pointed out earlier. Already need the number.
No, you're good.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number nineteen, award bid, Madison Segment Number Nine, Street and Utility Improvements. And again, Ryan, would you want to address this one?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, on, uh, Thursday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, bids were received and opened, uh, for the Madison Segment Nine Street and Utility Improvement Project. This is also known as the Northwest Fifth Street and Blanche Avenue intersection where we had a sinkhole last year. Um, a total of ten bids were received and opened for the project. The bids ranged from three hundred and, roughly three hundred twenty thousand to five hundred and two thousand. Um, the engineer's opinion of probable cost on this project was around three hundred and fifty thousand, so the bids came in good. Um, documentation was submitted with the bid, appears to be in order, we've went through that. Uh, the contractor's well-known and reputable, so Banner Associates and I would recommend awarding the Segment Nine Street Utility Improvements Construction Contract to Rungy Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Questions or comments?
I, I will note that this bid did come in over what we had actually estimated, so we may, depending on projects, fall in line, but may also see an appropriation needed for this in the amount of seven thousand four hundred.
You're talking what was budgeted from last year?
Other questions or comments?
What was the total amount again?
Uh, three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Three ninety or three nineteen?
Three nineteen.
Three nineteen.
Three nineteen.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to award bid, Madison Segment Nine, Street Utility Improvements to Rungy Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number twenty, August twenty twenty-five, city updates. Jamison or Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got loading in the screen here. All right, so, for this month's updates, we'll give a quick look at the full project list. Note that we've added a couple new things, uh, both items in the new category, as well as the master, Parks Master Plan. Um, those are our new projects, which we will detail in the slides. Go ahead, next slide. Um, these next two slides, I'm gonna let Ryan take it, because these are the major streets and utility improvements we're doing, and it seems like they change on a daily basis, so I wanted to make sure we get the most updated information. Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, segment five A, as it indicates there, uh, asphalt paving is scheduled, um, that is scheduled for tomorrow morning. Um, they plan to do the first lift. And there is a tracer wire issue that we need to, uh, figure out how to fix. Um, if, if we're able to fix that, um, they may need, they may need to bore under the asphalt paving, or they may need to, um, do all remedial work in the boulevard. Uh, if they're able to get that fixed right away, then they'll turn around and pave the top lift immediately, and then hopefully this week that road can finally be open to traffic, that is, Union Avenue from Fourth Street to Seventh Street Southwest. Uh, segment five B is the Highland Avenue Project out front, uh, also indicates that asphalt paving on Phase One. Phase One goes from Fourth Street Southwest to, up to Fer- uh, First Street Southwest. Um, there's a number of patches that are currently needing to dry out, we've removed the gravel. The subbase looks good, it's very firm, it's just the top gravel's a little wet. Um, the Fourth Street intersection should be completely paved now, and they were planning on putting the second lift of asphalt on the Third Street intersection as well. So that one's nearing completion with the asphalt paving, and then once that is done, um, they'll open up this first, uh, Phase One section and close down the Phase Two and begin utility installations. Uh, Eagan Avenue Reconstruction, um, concrete flatwork has been going on for the last week. Uh, they poured the outside lanes first with the curb. Uh, second pour was done on Friday, and they have, uh, poured some, uh, uh, curb returns on the Third Street intersection, some radiuses, um, and poured in, uh, some of the curb that goes to the west, it's kind of a unique curb situation, so, both field engineering was needed today, and that was accomplished and looks pretty good. So, um, they'll keep working on that concrete flatwork, um, that is Phase One. Phase One will be complete when all of the work is done, that includes all of the surfacing, uh, including the sidewalks, and the boulevard restoration and seating as well. So, um, before they can move into Phase Two, they've gotta fully complete that.
Go ahead, next slide. Go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, Park Creek Walls Site Two, uh, they're still doing the construction of the facade wall, it's very tedious work. Um, they're required to match the construction of the wall that was there before. It, it served as a structural wall before, now it's just a facade wall, but the rocks, um, have to go back to the location that they were before. So they had taken photos and documented and numbered all of the rocks, and they're trying to fit those back exactly the way that they were before, in order to, uh, meet all of the requirements of the State Historic Preservation Office. So, that work is taking a little bit longer than anticipated, but, uh, it's, it's ongoing. Uh, Airport Apron and Taxi Lane Project, uh, Phase One is the air, apron adjacent to the FBO hangar. FBO is standing for Fixed Base Operation Hangar, so that's the main hangar. Um, that's substantially complete, that was paved last week. Um, Phase Two is a remainder of that apron and then all of the, uh, taxi lane, um, that did start today. Um, that work is going very well. And then last is the twenty twenty-five South Dakota DOT Airport Pavement Maintenance Project. Um, this is a cracked ceiling and, and a seal coat, um, program and project, there are seven airports that are part of that. Um, all of the work is substantially complete, the only thing that remains is pavement markings, they'll come back thirty days after that seal coat has dried and, uh, put in the permanent markings.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions on those projects?
Questions or comments? Doing the creek walls is like a big jigsaw puzzle.
Certainly is, yeah. It's been a, it's been a challenging one.
All right, uh, moving on to our Parks Master Plans, we announced recently that we are putting together Parks Master Plan. Uh, we are collecting a lot of feedback from the community, and so you're gonna see us out and about. We also have a survey available online, you can follow this QR code, and that's gonna be popping up in our, some of our social media channels and, and in our parks as well. And so we encourage everybody who lives in town to complete the survey, please give us feedback on what you feel about our parks as they are today, as well as where you'd like to see them going. You'll see us popping up, uh, tomorrow night, we're gonna be at Downtown and Madtown, we're gonna have a booth, we're gonna have some tablets, encourage people to take the survey, talk to them, um, and ask some questions. And then next week on Wednesday, which I think would be the thirteenth, um, yes, the thirteenth, is, uh, we're gonna have a town hall here in City Hall on the first floor lobby, and we're gonna have everybody come in to, uh, have some more in-depth conversations and collect data on what they feel about our parks. So you'll see a few different community opportunities to be engaged, and again, we encourage everybody to participate. Any questions there?
No, very good.
When is this open until?
Yep, the survey's open now, and it closes, uh, uh, we're already in August, September seventh? Okay, I'm getting a nod from Savannah. We've had a lot of great staff cooperation on this as well, so I do want to give shout out to staff, but, um, yes, September seventh is when that closes, so it's open for the next month, and, uh, I encourage people not to wait three weeks, just do it now. All right, next slide, I think we skipped one there. There we go. Uh, we wanted to welcome a new employee, Kaden Hunzley is our Recreation Intermural Coordinator up at the Community Center. Um, he's got experience with us, so this is a, a homecoming for him, and we are looking forward to having him, uh, start. Well, I shouldn't say we're looking forward to, he started this last month, we are happy that he has started with us, and we're looking forward to seeing what he can do at the Community Uh, two new items we've added on to our project list, first is just an overview of our budget preparation, so that the, the public and the commission are aware. Um, recently, uh, as of the first, we had our deadline to departments to get their draft budgets to the finance office, and then, uh, that's more on the operations side, and then the capital budget requests for one-time larger expenses is due from departments on August fifteenth. Um, August eighteenth, it says nonprofit requests are due, uh, that, that actually, it should be the nonprofit requests are gonna be discussed during the commission meeting on August eighteenth, so that's our next one. Each year we discuss those as, as a commission, so you can, um, ask questions from anybody who's in attendance, but also provide direction to staff on how you want to see those allocations built out for this year, and then that will be built into the budget ordinance. September fifteenth, we will have our annual planning session to discuss the budget, um, and, and collect more input and feedback from you before we officially have our first reading, which is then on October twentieth, and then the second reading will be the next meeting, after that be the first meeting in November. Questions on the budget? Okay. Quick update on the wage study, um, that was something that we had action on a few meetings ago, and so that is progressing. We have now reviewed and submitted all updated job descriptions to Alternative HR, the vendor on this project, and they are gonna be, um, pulling comparisons from other employers for each position, one by one, and providing it for evaluation before they can give us the updated, uh, market analysis, uh, the end product for the wage study. Right. Um, some past events, we had a JAWS event at the outdoor pool at the Madison Aquatic Center, which turned out very well, you can see we had a large number of youth there, and they all left with all ten fingers and all ten toes. Uh, the library has, has kept busy as usual, they had a teen event, Paint and Pastries, which was a big hit, and they said hardly a pastry is left behind. Uh, if you see signs popping up around the community, those are, um, noting the, the youth in our community that have met the goal of reading at least ten hours this summer, so make sure to congratulate those readers. And then on the, the left side, you can see that the Garden Club has been visiting different local gardeners, including Daryl Simon, he is a neighbor of mine, and I can, uh, confirm with personal experience that he's very good with kids stopping by, and, and my girls have, have eaten a food item or two from his garden, and so, uh, the Garden Club has been making their rounds, and they've been having a lot of fun meeting local gardeners. Other events from the library, Graphic Novel Book Club, uh, has started, and that's, uh, in, ages eleven to Other events in the library, Graphic Novel Book Club, uh, has started, and that's, uh, in, in ages eleven to twelve, or excuse me, eleven to thirteen. Um, our senior citizens, um, have had some interactions with, uh, the library and, and with, uh, high school seniors in particular, um, as they've been assisting each other. And then, um, the library was at Martin Park, which had a large number of people. It was a good turnout, uh, good weather for that day. And we had pulled out one of the five-star reviews that somebody had left regarding the library, and so you can read that there, highlighting the, the variety of activities and, um, operations that our local library here highlights. Uh, they've been doing this for a hundred and twenty years and we're looking forward to seeing what they do next. Upcoming events, tomorrow, National Night Out is in conjunction with Downtown and Madtown. So National Night Out is five to eight PM. Uh, the Downtown and Madtown goes from six to nine, um, but feel free to stop down there earlier to, to start National Night Out, and that is Downtown Egan Avenue. Upcoming library events, uh, we have Level Up, um, where you can visit the library and play with the next playground. We have, um, opportunity for kids to see the school bus, um, school bus storytime, so you can listen to a story from the bus driver and ask some questions. And this is particularly good for kids who are new to writing, uh, new to school and, um, need to ride the bus and might need to calm those first day jitters. Uh, we also have family fun nights, um, the Pokemon Nerf Night back this fall, and other adult events such as the trivia and the puzzle competitions. Library's always staying very busy. And that is all. Are there any questions on, on any of these updates?
Questions at all?
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none? Thank you. Hey, uh, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will announce that, uh, what Jameson just said is tomorrow is National Night Out, Tuesday, August fifth, five to nine PM downtown. And our next regular commission meeting will be Monday, August eighteenth, here in the commission room at five thirty PM. And at this point, do we have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, uh, subparagraph four?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we are now in executive session. We'll move into the conference room. And thank you, everyone, for.